I want to thank everyone and welcome you to the, this meeting of the Monroe County Council. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is Tuesday, February 27th in our meeting. We're running just a few minutes behind and I apologize for anyone delayed by that. I'll ask all to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, on the agenda, as you've seen it, councilors, we've got it before you. Does anyone wish to add or remove an item from tonight's agenda? Seeing none, there was maybe a statement outside, but not in here. So it looks like the agenda is okay. I do want to note, just for the record, in the council chambers, we have Counselor Wiltz, Counselor Crossley, Counselor McKim, Counselor Munson, and online virtually with us, we have Counselor Iverson. I believe that is it for now. All right, thank you very much. Well, next go to item four on the agenda, and that is public comment. There will be a time limit of three minutes for all in public comment. If we have anyone wishing to make public comment on items not on our agenda in the Nat U Hill, please come forward to our table here. If there's anyone attending virtually that'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand and we'll get to you one by one. So here in the Nat U Hill, do we have anyone? Public comment? Okay, how about online? All right, I am going once, twice, all right, we'll move along. Thank you very much. Let's move on to department updates. And these are for department updates for items currently not on the agenda from our department heads. I know we were looking for Mr. LaRue, is he available?
I know he thought he might be late.
Okay, we'll watch for him later. How about Kelly Whitmer from Parks? There you are. Hi Kelly, come on forward.
I push this. No, it'll, it'll start on its own. Excellent. I wanted to inform the council and the public about our solar eclipse preparations for county park system. And with, in consultation with the park board, we have decided all county parks, which most people know as Cars Farm Park, Flatwoods Park, Will Detmer Park, Cars Farm Greenway, Limestone Greenway, will be open and free to the public during the solar eclipse on Monday, April 8th. All restrooms will be open that we have, fully stocked, playgrounds ready to go. You cannot reserve a shelter. We ask that the public share, share the picnic tables, share the shelters. We'll have park staff on site to assist anyone that may need them. I'm encouraging the public, for their own safety, maybe that they stay home and just kind of walk outside and enjoy the eclipse that way. Because if you do go to Cars Farm Park, you might get caught in a 10-hour traffic jam. There is no athletics at Cars Farm Park on April 8th. There is no recreational programs on April 8th. Due to the fact of the traffic and we are, we cannot be assured of ambulances can make it to our parks. So we think the best thing is to just cancel, but the out-of-town folk is more than welcome to come and enjoy our parks. They're very large and very open. They can even go on probably the athletic fields if it hasn't rained the night before with their chairs and whatnot. We're encouraging everyone to go to Indiana University Memorial Stadium. They're having a very large event. They're selling tickets. They're having William Shatner, Jay Mason, the astronaut, and musical performance. And if you do go there, I would suspect it would be maybe a 15-hour endeavor. So pack, pack everything you might need. They will have food trucks. So is there any questions about what we're doing?
Are you going to share about your t-shirts?
Oh.
Yay, look how cute it is.
Andrew can put up our t-shirt. How to get our t-shirts, you can put them on the front, you can put it on the back. They're for our Monroe County Parks and Recreation Foundation. They're really cute. Yes, it's a bat. Why a bat? Well, why not a bat? Bats like to come out at night. It's not a dog or a cat or a cow. And he's really cute. We have all kinds of colors and this is my favorite. The bat glasses change with the color. We have used sizes that have more primary colors and I have all kinds of sizes if you want to come to the Parks Department to try them on. And they're $16 apiece, $8 for shipping, $2 for each additional shirt, so order with friends, as we say. Anyone have any questions?
I got one for my birthday yesterday. I was so excited.
There you go. Do you know which color you chose?
It was a bluish.
Bluish, okay. Oh, and that's another thing. You have to pick the size first, then the color. It just doesn't work the other way. I don't know that, it's not Amazon. It's that, so, oh, there you go. And yes, doesn't that look blue at the top, but it's called teal. The other that looks a little red, that's called orchard. In this, you would think it's green, but it's called dusty. So there's all kinds of sizes and everything and we, the public to have fun with it, please order. And we just hope that everyone has fun with it. And we want everyone to be safe during the eclipse. We've told our dog park people that, hmm, you may not want to be in traffic with your dog if you're coming out to the park. Maybe visit us another day. But for guests and everyone, please come to the parks. They'll be open, restrooms open, fully stocked, as I say. Any other questions?
One more time for the folks at home who might want that great t-shirt. You sold well. How would they get it?
Well, Andrew, where's Andrew? Andrew just had that up. He has the website up there, I believe. Well, I'm not sure if you can see it.
They have to tell us.
There it is. MonroeParksFoundation.org, that's it. And you can click on that and find how to get these wonderful t-shirts.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from council? Awesome. You should probably sell every good thing that comes into this county. You did a great job. Thanks, Kelly. All right, other departments that wish to provide an update, come on forward. We see the commissioners are here. Welcome.
Good evening. We are wanting to discuss the jail site right now. And we are very well aware of the fact that ultimately we all have to come to an agreement on the site. At this point, we just want to make it clear what our thinking is and the direction that we would like to see things move in, possibly. And just so that the public will know that this is not something that has been deep-sixed or anything. There are numerous problems with the Thomas, Thompson property, especially if we want to co-locate the courts and the other parts of the justice system with the jail. First, we must remove a mound of soil and debris, which is 53 feet high and six, and occupies six acres. Second, Duke Energy will have to move a portion of their high-voltage power line, which crosses the property. Together, these two items will cost several million dollars and will delay beginning the project by at least two years. Duke would be a minimum of two years and then, and with a minimum cost of a million dollars. We've all heard that time is money. That is an adage that has real meaning here. We will continue to patch together the current facility as best as we can, but that can become extremely expensive. And if we knew, need a new elevator, which it appears we might, that could be up to half a million dollars. Waiting two years or more to begin the construction of the justice complex could increase the cost by up to 3% to 4% or even more annually.
Most important, we want to point out that there is a human cost to delaying a project that cannot be ignored. We will continue to have to rely on our current jail facility in the interim, a jail which has been deemed unconstitutional, which lacks sufficient space for programming. We all want, and this impacts our inmates, it impacts our staff, and it impacts the sheriff's department as well. We had two really vibrant listening sessions with residents who live in the vicinity of the Thompson property, and they spoke in opposition to the proposed justice complex, especially noting issues relating to traffic. We want to thank them for their time and also for the insight that they provided to us. So we have the human cost, we have the financial cost, we have the costs related to time, and we have heard from residents. So we'd like to shift our focus to an in-depth investigation of the next location on the list, which is North Park. If we can acquire property in North Park that is suitable for the justice complex, we can move forward relatively quickly. The site we are interested in has much better access for relating to traffic, and so it's much better than Rogers area. And utilities will not need to be rerouted, so that's also a benefit. State law requires us to have a jail. We don't have a choice. As good stewards of Monroe County resources and in people who care about the, those who are incarcerated, those who work in the justice complex, and those who live in our community, we need to move with expediency. So we look forward to working with you on this. This is a huge project and we've collaborated, collaborated very well, and we want to continue that forward motion, but turn our sights to another site, another direction. So we thank you again for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, other departments wishing to provide an update, either online or in person? Like, we've got the jail commander and chief deputy Parker, come on up.
We will be quick. We haven't given you guys an update in a while, so here's our opportunity. Currently, we have 211 inmates. Our secure bed count is 191. In the last 48 hours, we have booked in 11 people. In the last 48 hours, we have released 26. We have 172 felony inmates, 29 misdemeanor. We have six DOC hold and two out-of-county hold. Our most recent bookings at the facility are trespass, intimidation and threats, possession of methamphetamine and probation violation.
Just another little update thing. We've, we've committed to the council, I think President Deckard asked us to kind of do these things a little more routinely. So one of the things I, that I want to focus on are things that happened in that facility that keep pointing us to the need to move forward with this new facility. So there, there are things that happen in there that, that we hear, can you just fix it? Can you just fix it? So one of these things here, I just, this is kind of gross, I'm just warning you upfront. So we had some shower drains that were clogged up, and we began the process of clearing those today. And in those two shower drains, we removed two pounds of hair that had accumulated in those shower drains. And you think, how is that possible? Well, there's, there's a couple reasons. Well, those are cast iron drains, and as time has aged them, it's roughed them up on the inside, so there's not a, the stuff catches, and there's no way for that stuff to smoothly flow down that drain line. And the other issue is, those are poured in concrete, so to repair those, to change, change them out, you have to bust up the concrete to get to them. In the last six months, we have had two failures of the eight-inch main sewer line. One of those cut loose and dumped a fair amount of sewage in one of the administrative offices in the sheriff's side. It was going out that way. So all these things, I just tell you that, that this is, this is the state of the building that continued, that we continue to fight almost every single day. I wanted to touch on just another thing, and it, and the eclipse is ever-present and growing on us. I, I was, don't want to rain on the Parks Department's plate, but we, we contacted NASA and we canceled the eclipse, so it's not going to happen, so.
It's a strong sheriff.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a little different for us than it is your, your normal agency, but what I wanted to bring to you in all seriousness, that as, as we plan through this, and we've had numerous planning meetings about the eclipse, this is just a, information only that as we approach this, there's going to be a lot and a lot of radio traffic through the emergency services through this. So part of our planning is that we're going to have to rent about 50 different UF radios so that if our primary communication system goes down, that we have a backup system. We're into that detail of planning. So obviously, we'll look at our equipment and then, and budgets for that. I just want to let you know that that will be another expense that's coming out of this eclipse. I talked to you all about the overtime, just so you'll know that the, the expenses for the eclipse are mounting on our sheriff's office, you know, pretty routinely and pretty quickly. So I didn't want you to have any surprises, you know, if we, if we have to come talk to you later on about these expenses. And then, last but not least, I'm going to have, we're going to try to get on y'all's agenda here for your next council meeting to talk about the transition team for the new jail build and, and how we're going to move on that. So I want to let you know that you can be looking forward to that conversation, hopefully at our next council meeting.
Sure, heads up.
That's all I have.
Very much. Any questions from council? And I will note Counselor Hock has joined us via Teams. All right, thank you very much. We appreciate so much the update. And again, folks out there, careful on that eclipse. You're hearing that, that's not just the day to make a decision to go do 900 things you've not planned. That is a very serious day in this community because that thing is coming here and it doesn't regularly do it. All right. Thank you. We'll look forward to seeing you next time. Any other department heads? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on with our agenda to council liaison updates. Councilors, do you have any updates that you wish to give? Well, all right, going once, twice. You all want to get on with the agenda, we will do it. Let's move on to item seven, board and commission appointments.
Okay. Council, I move to approve the appointment of Trent Sights, Seats to the Convention and Visitors Commission to complete the remainder of a two-year term that expires on December 31st, 2024.
Second.
All right, we have a, a motion and a second, and I believe, Mr., am I saying it sites or seats? Sights?
Sites.
Sites, awesome. If you want to come on up here so the council can meet you, and thank you for stepping forward for service.
Of course, it's a pleasure.
Feel free to have a seat, and if you'd like to say a few words here to us, that would be wonderful.
Well, I am a little new to Bloomington. I've lived here for a little over a year and a half now. I moved my family here from Salt Lake. I'm the general manager of the Hilton Garden Inn and Coach's Bar and Grill around the corner here. And I'm excited to see how I can contribute to the community here.
Thank you. Those are the magic words we love hearing. So thank you so much. And hopefully for anyone watching at home that wishes to serve on a, a board or commissioner, lend your expertise. County government is built up people and does a lot of things for people through appointees, much like the one that we have before us. And so with that, council, any discussion, I'll open it up to you.
Thanks for stepping up.
Everybody good? All right, getting the thumbs up from Counselor Iverson. So let's do this, let's go ahead to a roll call vote on the appointment.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hock?
Did that come through? Can you hear me?
I barely, but I can hear you. She said yes. Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you so much.
Best wishes with it. That takes us to item number eight from the legal department, and Mr. Cockerell, I believe.
Council, I move to approve resolution 2024-10, approval of a tax abatement for Baxter Pharmaceutical LLC.
Second.
Very much. And Mr. Cockerell is on his way in. Your timing is impeccable as usual. Mr. Cockerell, we've just gotten to item number eight, so if you want to come up and introduce it. Also note, Counselor Crossley's nursing back a little frog in the throat, so everybody give her your sympathy.
Yes, well, what you guys have before you is a request for a tax abatement. This is in a area that was declared an economic revitalization area in 2021, part of a previous expansion at Baxter. And it was declared such for five years, so this is a one-step process as opposed to the normal preliminary declaration and then final declaration that we, that you guys typically see when you do a tax payment. So it's already been declared an economic revitalization action, so it's already been prepped for that stage of, of the process. This was discussed at the EDC meeting, Economic Development Commission meeting earlier today. The Economic Development Commission recommended the council approve this abatement by unanimous vote of three to zero. The abatement is at, is on Baxter's property off of, I think it's 927 South Curry Pike? And so that's kind of south of the Tish district, so it's not in any kind of tax increment finance district or anything like that. The company is expected to invest, or 225 million, 80 million in real property improvements and the remaining 145 million in personal property improvements. Such improvements will abate, and this is a standard abatement of where it decreases 10% each year. This, taken together, they will abate approximately 11 million dollars in property tax and, but they will still pay 9 million, approximately 9 million over that 10-year period as well. So that's almost, the real estate is essentially 50/50, but the personal property is a little less than 50/50 due to depreciation of equipment. So the, the company representatives are here to, to kind of explain to you what they're going to do, but it does come with that positive recommendation.
Thank you very much. I think we would now invite company members forward, however best that works. Nope, Jen Pearl's here with the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. Not her first visit, good to see you back. Hi. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening and, and thanks for having us, and thank you for your, your consideration for this request. I guess first thing to clarify is, you'll see Semtra on our slides, so, you know, we can step through these slides if, if you'd like to advance to the next slide. First of all, I guess my name's Pat Adams. I'm the site head at the Bloomington Semtra facility, formerly Baxter. So I'd like to kind of walk through a little bit about Semtra, the company, just to give you guys an idea of what, what type of manufacturing organization we are, and then, of course, explain the project we would like to, to explore. So if you'd like to move to the next slide? So, so we are an aseptic or sterile fill-finish manufacturing, contract manufacturing site, so manufacturing products of various pharmaceutical companies around the globe. As indicated in the agenda, we are, we're operating as a subsidiary of Baxter International for the last 22, 23 years at the same address over on 927 South Curry Pike, previously Cook Imaging up until 2001. So been, been in the community for quite some time. You know, we, we specialize in sterile fill-finish services such as tech transfer, formulation, filling, labeling of syringes and vials, secondary packaging, inspection. The, the company as a whole right now, following the divestiture from Baxter, is about 1,600 employees. We have two sites. We have one here in Bloomington, one sister site in Holgermany. Both do the similar manufacturing, sterile fill-finish. The site in Holgermany focuses more on cytotoxic, highly potent compounds that you really need to protect your employees against while manufacturing. We are more traditional biologics, vaccines, oncology projects, diabetes treatments, autoimmune, MS treatments, things of that nature. So in the life-sustaining or, or life-saving indication, so not, not cosmetic in nature. We, we do take products from early phase all the way through commercial operations, so clinical through commercial, and we have a, a very strong regulatory or compliance history. You know, in our world, to, to have clients trust us with their molecules, their complex, their, their high-value branded type molecules, we have to have a very, very strong regulatory position. So we distribute products all over the globe. That opens us up to audits or inspections from all over the globe. As a matter of fact, we had the FDA at our site recently. We have the TGA coming next week, that's the Australian agency. And in April, we have the AMA, so the, basically the European agency. So we are a highly audited, highly audited site and a, certainly a highly regulated site. So if you'd like to move to the next slide? Next slide, please? Okay, so this just goes through a little bit of history of our site. Established in 1983, you can see in 2001 Baxter acquired the site from Cook Imaging at the time. Has a series of milestones here completed, you know, you, you see there in 2009, filled over 100 million units in a year. I guess I would point out, we're a high-volume, high-commercial throughput site, so we're making a large number of products. Like, for instance, this year, we made over 130 million units, prefilled syringes, liquid vials, and lyophilized vials, I should have mentioned. Those are the platforms that we fill. And again, all sterile injectables, so. Next slide, please? Just wanted to introduce, we have many of these folks here, but this, this is our local leadership team.
Can see them back here, I believe.
Pardon me?
Right behind you too, right?
Yeah, many of them are here, yeah. We average probably 16 and a half to 17 years of seniority on our senior leadership team. So this, this is a group that, you know, all but I think three live here in Monroe County and have been working at, I think we had 55 folks that were at Cook Imaging that made the transition to Baxter and now have made the transition to, to Semtra. So pretty, you know, we, we're very proud of that type of seniority on our senior leadership team, so. Do you want to move to the next slide? The next slide points out, you know, I, I failed to mention, but the, the sale or the divestiture was to two private equity firms that was completed in October of last year. They have established a corporate or a C-suite leadership team that's listed here. CEO Frank Onagron was announced shortly before the close. Ray Guadati, our CEO, and Raul Cardona, they are kind of our operating leads of the site, if you will. They have spent 25-plus years in the CDMO space, so our manufacturing space, which is very incredibly valuable to have folks that have, have involvement in that space. It's a very different type of manufacturing. And then the remainder of this leadership team has been finalized. Beau Watkins and Ben Watt, who's in the back there, they are legacy Baxter folks, or legacy BPS. So we have a, a nice complement of, you know, historical folks from our, our So we have a, a nice complement of, you know, historical folks from our, our Baxter that are on our executive leadership team, so. But that rounds out the, our corporate leadership team that essentially is in charge of the two sites between Holger Germany and here in Bloomington, so. Next slide, please? Oh, there. So this just details our entire operation here in Bloomington. So we have a main campus that will be the focus down on the bottom of the screen. That's on 927 South Curry Pike. The, we just wanted to point out, we have a couple of warehouses just north of that on Curry Pike. And then our inspection, labeling and secondary operations, so a pretty big operation over in Park 48 just to the left before you get to the global Cook headquarters there. So we have approximately 300 of our employee, of our roughly 1,000 employees that sit there at that, that site. The focus of the request for the abatement is on the main campus of the 927 South Curry. If you want to move to the next slide, we'll, we'll look at that. So here's a outline of our main campus. You can see we have two manufacturing buildings already on site, Buildings D and Building C. So we have currently five active, I'll say, manufacturing lines as we speak. You'll, for some perspective, you'll hear that our expansion includes three additional lines, so nearly doubling our capacity. So it's a significant addition to the site. We also have on site our R&amp;D labs there at the bottom right, so we do have research and development, and we're establishing more of a footprint in the clinical development space, so product development. So we can become more of that kind of one-stop shop for the, for our type of manufacturing. Right now, we focus predominantly on commercial operations, so this will allow us to step into the early phase, earlier phase elements of that manufacturing. Off to the left, you see we have an entire building dedicated to quality control, so there's everything from incoming quality to in-process testing of, of product to finished product testing. And then there kind of in the center-left, that green space where the new expansion signaled is Building H, that's where the intent of this project that we would like to, to construct to, to add to our capacity. Would you like to go to the next slide? So here, here, this picture in the middle is kind of a rendering of what we would intend to, to build there. This would be a two-story, approximately 150,000 square foot manufacturing suite. We would add, as I said, three additional manufacturing lines, all high-speed, two prefilled syringe lines and one vial line. We would anticipate that this would add, I'll say conservatively, 130 full-time employees with an average salary of just under $35 an hour. And these would be in all disciplines, operations, quality, supply chain, engineering, maintenance, that would support those operations, so. And then it was, it was mentioned before, but the total investment is just approximately $225 million that we're looking at to accomplish that. I'll pause there. We have a couple additional slides, but I want to see if you have any questions with the, the expansion in and of itself.
Good right now.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
Next slide? Wanted to share some of our, you know, we're, we're pretty active in the kind of local community. Wanted to share some of the, I'll say, groups that we are affiliated with or have right, pretty good relationships with and, and, and remain very active with. Next slide, please? And then three that we have kind of an ongoing, you know, Community Kitchen is one that we have a monthly slot that we work with, that we just send, we rotate different departments that go support that. Ivy Tech is one that we have partnered with in the past, and we have, at the end of last year and beginning of this year, we've, we've begun to meet with to really extend that partnership with some of the hiring we're doing this year and the hopeful hiring we'll be doing with association with this expansion. You know, the, the duration to onboard people into this type of manufacturing is, is pretty extensive. Anywhere from three to nine months to be, I'll say somewhat proficient at your job, depending on the discipline. And so we're looking to partner with Ivy Tech to accelerate that and help us with that. That's, that's a tremendous, you know, burden on our training department with the number of folks we're looking to hire. So we've worked with, with Ivy Tech to come up with some curriculum that we believe will, will, will support that. So we'll start with our direct label, but we, we have plans to really extend that relationship and they've been incredibly inviting and excited about that. And then Salvation Army is another one that we, we participate on an annual basis during the, the, the gift giveaway, so. Next slide, please? The next two slides are just, you know, as I said, we, we have been Semtra for all of about four and a half months now. This was fresh off the press. Our, our ESG report was, was finalized last week. These, so this is a compile of some of our existing statistics. I think you'll see that we'll take even a, a stronger stance as we move forward as Semtra now. So these are, these statistics represent both our site and the Holger Germany site. So there are, there are numbers associated with both. I wanted to point that out. But, you know, being a responsible, I'll say, social and environmental participant is, is very important to, to Semtra. And it's something that I think, you know, this time next year, we'll be sitting with very more robust plans in terms of how we'll, we'll, we'll have this represented, so. And then the last slide is just another slide from our, our report with a quote from our CEO, just indicating the, the importance of that to him and to our organization, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I think we will now, Ms. Pearl, did you want to make a comment as well?
Hi, good evening. My name is Jen Pearl and I'm the president of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. We are a nonprofit that serves all of Monroe County in helping our existing employers to expand and to attract new ones. So we just wanted to express our support and gratitude for your consideration of this tax abatement this evening as well as our support and appreciation to the company for considering their investment in Monroe County. We see this as an incredible opportunity for Monroe County. We've been seeing a lot of federal and state investments in innovation in our community, which we've talked about at previous meetings. And this in particular is a significant opportunity in that innovation landscape. Semtra's proposed expansion includes plans for, you know, 140,000 square foot or so building at an estimated investment of 80 million, a $145 million investment for cutting-edge equipment. Put together, that actually makes this one of the largest projects that we've seen in four years in working on projects. So it's a very significant number, actually since, from 2020 to 2023. All projects together we saw is $680 million in CapEx, so we're looking at 225 here, just for scale. Also, Semtra's plans for adding 130 new jobs at an average wage of $72,000 is far higher than our median household income of $60,000. So that is another thing that we want to underline in the kind of the value of this project and why we're excited to see it moving forward. This is especially critical because our community has lagged the statewide averages when it comes to local wages. And then finally, Semtra's Bloomington team is very involved in the community, and I actually just wanted to invite the Semtra team, everyone who's here, if you wouldn't mind waving. So they've, they've pretty much filled the gallery in the back, and we have, honestly, we've, we've brought other, you know, companies forward and accompanied them on abatement applications, and I have never seen a group this large come out from the company. I think it really underscores how they are here, they're present in the community, they're supportive. And we've really been proud to work with the company, you know, with IU, with Ivy Tech, trying to get our students out and retained by working in these great jobs. So all around, it's, we're very excited about this project. We're grateful for your consideration of it. And we're also happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much for being here. I'll go to questions from counsel. Counselor McKim?
I guess this is really more of a, a comment than a question. I just, when Advent and Warburg Pinkus announced the acquisition of BPS, there was definitely some, you know, trepidation, I think, among constituents that, you know, private equity buying out, just going to sell off the assets. And I think this enormous investment, I mean, this, this is a really large, this enormous investment really strongly puts those concerns to rest, and so I think we're all really excited to hear this and really excited to see it move forward.
I think, I think we shared some of that initially. Their message has not changed from the start about this being a growth play. Their culture fits very well with our, we, we have a very good culture at our site. And they've, they've, they've molded very, very well, so we're very excited as a site. You know, we haven't had this kind of investment in a lot of years, so it's, it's been very good.
So Counselor Iverson's hand next?
Thank you, Mr. Decker, and, and thank you all for being there. I wish I could be there with you in person, but it's just so exciting to hear three new lines, 130 new jobs above the, the, the local median. That's just great news. And the only thing I think I have to add to all this is that just really strengthens this corridor that we have. You know, this innovation is just happening all around Monroe County and just couldn't be more excited about this project. Thank you all for being here, and I just wish I could be there with you in person.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Iverson. Other counselors. Counselor Munson?
I'm hoping you can tell us more about how current Baxter employees are being meshed into your company and, and the changing structure.
Yeah, so there's been little to no change. I mean, I've been there 18 years. The entire leadership, nothing has changed. We've just got a, a, a C-suite leadership team that has been established that has done nothing but further support us to, to perform our jobs better. So the entire staff, the local staff has remained intact. In fact, it's grown significantly over the last four months. And it's, I don't want to say business as usual because there's
Because it's not.
It's not. It's better, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Wiltz?
Thank you. I'm really excited about this. I mean, your, this company's history and our community is well-known and I think one that's valued highly. So I want to ask you a little bit about the ESG statistics that you provided purely because these things are of interest to me. And I understand that you combine, these are combined stats from your two locations, but you did mention that the, the site in Germany handles quite a bit different types of chemicals. So that, just in my, my, my layperson view, might indicate that the waste would be a little bit different. And their energy needs might be different. I'm just wondering, how, can you, can you speak to like how that breaks down between the two sites at all?
I, I can't speak to our, our Germany site. I would suspect you're accurate that their waste disposal is a bit different from us, dealing with more hazardous type materials. But I, I can't speak to their, their waste practices. I mean, I can speak a little bit to ours, but not, not to theirs.
Okay, so on, on the, the three percentages that were listed there. So you have electricity procured through renewable sources, 100%. That's amazing.
That is the Holger site.
Okay.
To clarify, yes.
Okay, so our site is not, I mean, that would be like incredible, right, for Indiana? Goals, we got goals.
Yes.
And then, so do you have renewable, renewable energy sources used at all in the Bloomington site? Or plans for that?
We do have plan, can I see if one of my colleagues can answer that maybe better?
Phone a friend.
Yeah.
You, you'll need to come to the microphone. Thank you.
Sorry, Yuli.
Welcome.
Thank you. I don't need to put anyone on the spot. I really am just curious about, you know, kind of where you're headed.
This is Yuliana Mendez. She's our CapEx manager.
Good afternoon, everyone. So one of the things that we were meeting with legal counsel was on this, since this had recently been ruled out. And we are working with them to really understand what our goals are. And next year, third quarter, is when we're really going to finalize those goals and really put an aggressive CapEx plan to support that. At this time, I don't think that, that decision has been, been final, but I can tell you from our conversations with legal counsel and kind of our Semtra leadership team that this is something that's kind of high visibility, high importance. And what, and, you know, within four and a half months of being a new company, they really have focused on, on setting up a core team of ESG to really start tackling that. I just think right now it's too premature to really give an answer. But yes, there is going to be a very aggressive CapEx infrastructure with this new expansion project. We are looking at opportunities to really make it as energy efficient as possible with the highest performance equipment on our boilers, sort of clean steam generators, and tackle that as much as possible. I don't, it's still too premature to see if we're going to do a lean certification on the building. But that's something that's being analyzed right now from a cost perspective. But yes, every effort that we can take to, to, to really focus on the energy efficiency, we will, we were doing that.
I'm really, I'm really glad to hear that you're kind of working through this as a basis for your goals because that's clearly the, the purpose of, of this kind of thing, so I appreciate that. And again, I didn't mean to put anyone on the spot.
Oh, no, not at all. We're excited about this and I think we're, you know, from an engineering perspective, we definitely take that as a core thing that we look at of improving, not just the existing, the equipment that we're, you know, going to bring on with this new building expansion, but also with, you know, managing the assets that we have on site right now and as we're retrofitting and changing, adding new equipment to support and face out some of the older equipment. That's something that is very, at least for me, you know, very important.
My, my, I have one more question. That's okay? And this is just very, very generally, I thought it was interesting that you showed the map, the, the bigger 30,000-foot kind of map with your, your two locations and how do I phrase this? How are you finding the infrastructure for distribution in and out of, of that area? Because there's been a lot of, of change over, you know, the past several years. And, you know, roadways and access to and from the interstate, it seems like an ideal location. I'm just curious, what's your thoughts?
How, how we manage our own internal logistics between those buildings, is that we?
And is the infrastructure that's in place, the county infrastructure, our infrastructure, roads and, and that kind of thing, is that adequate to your growing needs?
And so right now, we're in the process of kind of planning that site planned of how logistically trucks are going to come in and out, and there is some concerns with one of the lights that we have. It's a very tight turn for semi-trucks to get into our new facility. So we're looking at, we're working with a civil company called Kimley Horn to kind of address, you know, what infrastructure changes we need to make on our side. Or come back and say, hey, can we relook at lights and kind of figure that out? But again, it's a little bit premature, but we are working with kind of a civil engineering firm and we have layouts of turn radius. I mean, it gets pretty technical of how trucks are going to come in and out of our facilities, at least at the main campus.
Currently, we, we have no issues, though. That's as we, if we were to move forward with this.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other comments or questions from counselors? I have a few my own, but I want to make sure. Counselor Hawke?
Yes, just wanted to say, of course, I've always loved Monroe County, but this seems to be such an exciting time for the opportunity for the people who live here. And I was so excited when I was reading your information that how many of your employees are living here in Monroe County now, and this is just And this is just an opportunity for our people to, to have a job that they can be proud to be working with and with your team and making enough money to actually survive here in this county, because it's pretty expensive to live here. So I'm excited for you and I'm excited for our county. Thank you so much for trusting this county to be a team player with you.
Thank you, Counselor Hawke, and I want to echo those comments. And also had a few of my own. There's a lot of things I love about this proposals that's been brought to us, and as you've articulated it. First of all, I love seeing all those faces back there. That tells me that not only are you in, wanting to be in the community, you are in the community, you are here. And the other thing I just warn you as along with everyone else, be safe getting home this evening. We've got some weather coming, which I know you all know. The other thing I'll say is, as I look at your presentation, there's two big things that stick out to me that I absolutely love. Number one, I like that you're going after tracking these numbers that Counselor Wiltz was asking about, particularly around corporate social responsibility. It's a term my young business students are learning a lot about it, and you're modeling that by tracking the numbers, figuring out how to track them better, and then report them out. I think that's huge, because we do, right? We, we have to look at our world who we're hiring, how we're impacting, how we're running. And I think it's awesome that you're, you're showing those and you're committed to keep reporting that. That's awesome. The other thing I love that Ms. Pearl's heard me say five million times is I love seeing these organizations, not-for-profits, higher education institutions that you're listing on your community impact. That is huge. When you're here among the community, you're part among that community, and I, I don't have to tell you that because you already get it. You've listed all these, you're showing their logos, you're showing that Community Kitchen that a number of us have volunteered in, and I think that's absolutely huge and commendable. That tells you, tells me that you're not only here, but you're doing the things that people here are doing. And I, I just am grateful for that. I love, as Counselor Hawke was saying, that this is adding opportunities for the people that work here as, or live here. As a, as a local kid, I watched as my dad's own facilities moved away from here. And I love anything that comes into these facilities that are established and provides jobs, opportunities, and pays a very good wage at that. And so that is, that is awesome. And anything that diversifies this local economy is a good thing. In the past, we've had some moments where we've been dependent upon one institution or one sector, whether that's showers brothers, someone might even say the university today. Anything that diversifies that with good opportunities is a good thing by me. So I'm just grateful for this, and I hope Ms. Pearl keeps bringing folks in just like this. And Mr. Cockrell too. Any other comments or questions from council? If not, I think we can go to a roll call vote.
Public comment.
A public comment, pardon me, thank you. Public comment on this ordinance as it's before us. If you have comments, please raise your hand on teams or come forward in the Nat U Hill room. I see Christopher Emge with the Bloomington Chamber has raised his hand.
Good evening, council. This is Christopher Emge from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, asking you to support this measure tonight. I would be at the historic Nat U room if I could. I echo a lot of the sentiments I've already heard today from the council, some great discourse, some great comments, some great question from Councilmember Wiltz. I want to thank the BEDC, specifically Jen Pearl and Clark Greiner for their hard tireless work on this. Jeff Cockrell, it again, came through for us. I think this is just a wonderful proposal, a wonderful resolution moving forward. And I just want to echo again that these, that this entity is a wonderful community partner for us. You saw the chamber logo and success school in there, very much part of both of those. So I'm asking you to support the resolution, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, raise your hand on teams or come forward in the Nat U Hill? Seeing none, I think we can safely go now to that roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, thank you very much. That now takes us, thank you so much all for coming. It was wonderful to have you with us. Come back anytime and visit. Kind of empties out. And I believe our building commissioner is here, and we didn't get him a moment ago, but he's got something he wants to share with us, and we need to hear from him, so come on forward.
Oh, look at this.
He's got a good greeting party.
It was so nice having a public here.
Come on forward. Want to welcome our building commissioner, Mr. LaRue, for being with us.
Welcome, thanking counselors. I appreciate your patience with me this evening. Just finished up another meeting, so, and it worked out well because there are fewer people back there now. I just wanted to share with you all our department activity report for 2023. Just talk to you a little bit about how the department looks after the year and answer any questions that you may have. We have one person on our, on our personnel list that worked in 23, but no longer works there, Jamie Yonkey. She did a great job for us, the county hasn't lost her, she's just not there. And I'm really excited to have the folks in the building department that are there. They're fantastic people, they work really hard, and I think they do a really good job for, for our community. The, the next page here, I'm just, I'm sure you all are aware that the county has a licensing program for electricians and registers state licensed plumbers. Those, the licensed electrician and registered plumbers are required to, to do work when the work is paid in the county. So through the licensing program, the department collected $52,475 in 2023. That seems to be pretty much on par with, with previous years. Next page talks about the commercial permits. One thing I wanted to just mention about this page, these numbers are for all of the permits. We have an additional, some additional information later on that specifically deals with housing in the community. 329 commercial permits were issued in 23, ranging from very small little remodels of space to large apartment buildings. Commercially, $209,188. Residential permits, 1,492 residential permits were issued last year. That is, again, everything from accessory structures, electric upgrades, new housing, remodels, additions, adding everything that we have that we've done residentially is included in those numbers. The, the total that the building department collected for its fees was $428,816.61. Additionally, the, the department collects on behalf of the Monroe County Planning Department for residential permits only. We do that, make, make it a little easier for folks that are building a house, or they only need to come into, into the offices once and pay all the fees at one time. And then we do the same for the city of Bloomington. We do collect fees for the city for both commercial and residential structures. So the grand total that came into the office was $546,864.56, with about $128,000 of that being collected for, not quite $128,000, a little over $100,000 collected for the various planning departments. As far as dwelling units that have been permitted, we, we have information here going back to 2011. 22 and 23, we were able to refine the information a little bit more and let, let you all know what the numbers of dwelling units being constructed in the city versus the county. And prior to 21, the information is a little harder to sort and sift through to, to break that down. So we will be presenting it in this, this format moving forward. 2022, I'm sorry, 2023, 158 single-family homes were permitted in the county. 15 manufactured homes, that would include mobile manufactured housing or, I'm on the spot, and I'm forgetting that what it's called. Housing that's, that's built elsewhere and placed on a site-built foundation, I'm sorry. And then we, we permitted eight duplexes, and 234 apartment units were actually issued in 23. That is not a perfect number, because we did have a couple apartment complexes that applied in 23, but their permits weren't issued until 24. So right off the bat, we have, can add 170 units to that. And as of today, there are probably 15 additional apartment buildings that are, have been, have submitted for review. So there's kind of a little slinky effect on, on some of the large projects that take a little longer to review and permit. Then the revenue distribution page, that's just what came in, where it went, slightly different format. I think it might be a little easier to read that way, but it also gives some idea of how 23, you know, broke down and compares to previous years. And then the, the last two pages just show similarly how the, how the funds were distributed to this, either the city of Bloomington or collected on behalf of the planning department. Just rambled a lot, I'm happy to answer any questions that, that you all may have.
You're in good company, we rambled a little ourselves, so you're, you're doing great. You can be on county council. All right, questions from counselors? Counselor Ler Munson?
I'll start with one. I didn't know that you licensed electricians and plumbers. And I do get to hear from young people who think they maybe want to pursue one of those professions. Do you have any input with people apprenticing to be electricians or plumbers?
There, there are some training programs in the state through, through unions specifically. What we see locally here is folks will go to work for electricians and work a number of years, and then they will sit and take the exam, take a, take the licensing exam. Currently, the, the exam is issued by the International Code Council and is available to anybody who'd like to do it. The, the licensing requirements to the licensing board, which is where I was half an hour ago.
Yes.
Spend time talking to candidates about their experience and trying to make sure that we're issuing license to qualified electricians. So there, there are also opportunities, there are two different types of license. One for master electrician, which allows folks to work on any structure that's, that the state of Indiana recognizes, and residential electricians, which is a really quite fantastic place for, for people to start. The, the exam is significantly less intricate, but allows people to obtain experience in, in kind of the nuts and bolts of putting together an electric system. So typically, what, what we're seeing are people who've gone to work for a company in the county and then have, have worked their way through that until they're ready to, to obtain a license. And then I, I just want to, we register state licensed plumbers. We don't, we don't actually issue a license for plumbing. So it's just the electricians.
Other counselors' questions? Counselor Hawke?
Yes, of course, those of you who've known me forever, you know that I come from a construction background. And so I really appreciate what our building department does, because if we're just talking about the cost of, of housing, when they have to wait for someone to show up to do inspections before they can pour the footer, or before they can pull the wires, or whatever, it costs that developer money, and thereby it also costs that prospective homeowner more dollars. And so I really appreciate the fact that we have a very prompt group of people who understand and work well with the builders, because that's all a part of the big picture of trying to provide housing for the people here in this county. So I appreciate this department very much, thank you.
To admit, I'm the one that's late all the time. Every, most of the other folks in my office are right on time all the time, so it's, it's pretty good.
An honest building commissioner is always appreciated. And I, I want to echo those comments, because I, I know a few, some of us were at the, the builder's luncheon where they meet and gather, and you were a, a, a strong voice there for how, how much you're in contact with them, talking with them, seeing their issues and problems, and, and, and praise and complaints too.
They are fantastic folks, and they work really hard for the community.
Thank you for doing that outreach as part of your, your duties. Yeah, Counselor Wiltz?
First of all, thank you for this report. I don't recall having seen one before.
I wish I would have known that before I sent it in.
Hey, I'm, I think it's, it's amazing, because, you know, there's a steep learning curve for this job, and I don't know what I don't know a lot of times, and I found this fascinating. Is it, is it, is it going to be posted maybe on, I don't know, does your department have a section of the county webs, website where they could post this? Maybe?
We do. I will do my best to figure out how to do that, so.
Maybe just call TSD and.
I'm better, I'm better as a building inspector than with.
Sure.
We, we will figure out how to get that there.
I think that was, I mean, I just, I learned a lot, so I think that sharing the information publicly might be, might be a benefit. I did, I was wondering about the fees. And obviously, there's different, different types of fees, but are they the same for each of the entities for whom you're collecting? So, meaning Monroe County versus city of Bloomington?
They, they are not.
So they, okay.
They're not the same. Monroe County, the planning department fees are generally more flat fee. Just, this is what it, this is what it is. All of the city of Bloomington's fees are based on square footage of, of the project. The building department fees are a mix of, of such things. So we have, commercially, there are base fees that are charged, and then square footage on top of that. Residentially, there are, it's just a square footage charge, but there is a minimum fee based on the complication of the project. So small remodels have a smaller fee. Additions have a, have a slightly larger minimum fee because it requires additional inspections, and new construction requires a larger.
Have the fees stayed largely flat over the years?
They have, and we.
I was noticing that the, the revenue seems to, I mean, it has some weird bumps, but.
The, the past several years, you'll, as, starting in about 2017, I think we've, the, the department had some fairly, fairly extraordinary years as far as the revenues that, that, and the fees collected. I think 23 is, has been kind of more in line with, with years prior to 17.
Do you have an explanation for that? Like why it went up for a few years pretty significantly and then?
One year was a 600,000 square foot hospital. Um, one year was a six hundred thousand square foot hospital. Um, and then a couple of the years have been a significant number of apartment units, right? So uh fairly large uh buildings that have presented a a different type of challenge for the inspectors in the department. So um, that, that i- in the past couple of years, everything that happened uh on Arlington, uh, so large number of single family homes, duplexes and and an apartment building happened there. And then last year, we had a large development on the east side of town um that I think had an impact on on the fees.
How are those fees set? I swear, it's my last one. But are they, is, do, do you determine how much the fees are?
I don't. They're set by ordinance and um so we will, at some point in the near future, be presenting a new fee schedule to the commissioners. So.
That's where I was headed.
Uh, the fees have not been adjusted in in a number of years. So um, uh, the deputy building commissioner has spent a lot of time uh reviewing the fees and we've talked about that. We have, we have a new fee schedule that I think is still very reasonable and but we will be presenting that to the commissioners at some time in the near future.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for coming in here and talking to us and sending us this report and we look forward to it next year.
I I I think I'm on the hook.
I think you did. No, us, you hang out with us, you will ask you to come back. All right, thank you.
I do, I I do wanna extend the offer. If you all ever would like to see what we do and uh come along with us sometime, uh, please just send me an email. I'm happy to show you what we do. Um, and uh, you know, if you pick a sunny day, that's better than a rainy day. You'll enjoy it more. So, but please just let me know. Thank you very much for your patience with me tonight and with my tardiness. I appreciate it.
Oh, you're fine. Thank you so much. We will now move to item nine in our agenda.
Counsel, I move to approve the Youth Services Bureau's request for an additional appropriations and fund ninety one zero three dash ninety six twenty four, Project Safe Place, in the amount of one thousand six hundred eighty dollars and forty five cents in the supplies category and six thousand in the services category for a total appropriation of seven thousand six hundred eighty dollars and forty five cents.
Second.
I wanna welcome Vanessa Schmidt and Sarah Jamison. Am I saying that right? Welcome to uh council and thank you for waiting patiently for this.
Thank you, counselors. Um, again, my name's Vanessa Schmidt. I'm the deputy director at Youth Services Bureau. This is Sarah Jamison. She's our program coordinator. Um, and she's just here with me this evening to kind of see this process. So um, this should be quick and easy for us. This is an Indiana Youth Services Association grant that we were previously awarded. However, there are additional funds based off of outreach that occurs throughout that fiscal period. Um, and thanks to our wonderful uh Safe Place Program manager, she's been able to um do a lot of outreach with first responders um and utilize our program with the D C S pilot program, which hopes to curb youth involvement with D C S by using our Safe Place Program and our resources first. Um, and so with that said, we were able to bring in an additional seven thousand six hundred and eighty dollars and forty five cents um from that grant and would just ask that that be appropriated this evening.
Thank you very much. Go to questions or comments from the council, if you have one. No, not hearing any. All right, we will go to comments from the public. If you have comments, please come forward to Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams and we'll get you set up. Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Counselor Munsen?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley? Or Hawk?
Did you call me?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm saying yes.
Thank you. Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Be safe out there. All right, item number ten is a request from the prosecutor's office.
Counsel, I move to approve the prosecutor's request for an additional appropriations and fund eighty one seventy seven dash ninety six twenty four, Elder Abuse Prevention, in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred thirty four dollars and thirty cents in the services category.
Second.
We wanna welcome Beth Hamlin. Thanks for waiting.
No problem. Uh, we have recently received additional funding for our Adult Protective Services Program. Uh, the funding comes from a grant by the Administration of Community Living, which is a department or a uh division of the Department of Health and Human Services. It's a pass through grant that comes to us from the Division of Aging at the state. The uses allowed by this fund are restricted and are detailed in the contract, which I believe you all have. Um, Adult Protective Services investigates allegations of abuse and neglect of endangered adults and makes referrals for necessary services. And our unit, which is Unit Ten, is responsible for these investigations in Monroe, Owen, and Morgan Counties.
So much. Questions from council or comments? Seeing none, um, we'll go to comments from the public. If you have comments, come forward to Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Munsen?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item number eleven. The Highway Department has a request.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request for an additional appropriation and fund eleven thirty five dash zero 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 zero, Cumulonave Bridge, in the amount of nine hundred forty four thousand four hundred thirty nine dollars and sixty cents in the services category.
Second.
And I believe.
Online.
Online. I know she told me earlier today she would be. Ms. Ridge is there and we'll invite her in to talk with us.
Hello?
Hello.
The floor is yours.
Okay. Um, so this actually was uh completed um last fall. It was done in November. We did not encumber the line because it was paid in December of twenty twenty um three, um, but the check was not processed until one three twenty four through the banks. So it left a negative balance, so we need to encumber it to get the line back to zero.
Any questions from council? Counselor McKim?
Yeah, just be uh because the the name of the project wasn't actually read as part of the motion. Can you just uh let the public know which project this is?
It was for the Bells Road Bridge forty five replacement that was completed by C L R Construction, uh, contractors in December twen- or in twenty twenty three.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions from council? All right, seeing none, we'll take comments from the public. If you have any, come forward to Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munsen?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, it takes us to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request for an additional appropriation and fund eleven seventy one dash zero 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 zero, County Major Bridge, in the amount of six million five hundred thousand dollars in the services category.
Second.
And before Ms. Ridge um moves on to item B, I believe Ms. Gregory has a clarification on item A.
Yeah.
Um, just wanna note for the record, that was approval of an additional appropriation, not an encumbrance. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, so we're good to on B's motion. We've got a motion in a second. Uh, Ms. Ridge?
Um, so we're kind of getting used to, we've all encumbered for so many years. I think this one just kind of overlooked our department. Um, we did not encumber this um line, but we are needing to appropriate the line for the Fullerton Pike Phase Three project for construction.
Questions from council or comments? Counselor McKim?
Uh, and you, can you just give us a quick update on the uh planned construction schedule?
I can. We just had our our pre-construction meeting actually um this past week or um Monday, I think it was, uh, with Milestone is the contractor. Um, we also um are going to have a public meeting. We are finalizing the date. As of right now, it's going to be March twenty fifth at Bachelor School Cafeteria. Um, so that way we can have the plans, the current design. We can have um our construction inspector there. We're going to be there and invite the citizens. We'll send it out to the email distribution list when I re- return this week. Um, and get the flyers out, announce it, put it on our website. So that way we, you know, we're um having full communication with the residents out there. Um, it'll start construction April first.
Thank you.
Full information for the public and for all of us. Okay. Counselor, anyone else? Comments or questions? All right, we'll go to comments from the public. If you have any, come forward to Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munsen?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, that takes us to item C.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request to deappropriate an appropriation and fund forty eight seventeen dash zero 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 zero, twenty twenty three G O bond capital projects in the amount of four hundred thirty thousand dollars in the capital category.
Second.
Ms. Ridge?
Um, so this uh project was um paid for in the past for design and right of way uh for local funds through the G O bonds that the commissioners had um appropriated and allocated money to. Since then, um, N dot is going to finance eighty percent of the construction of this project. So we would need to, that's why we are deappropriating in that fund um and getting everything that's our match for construction into the grant fund and then construction. Um, uh, yeah, that's what we're doing.
Questions or comments from council? Seeing none, we'll invite the public. If you have comments on this, to come forward to Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Munsen?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, thank you. That takes us to item D.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request of a fund to fund transfer of cash from Fund forty eight seventeen dash zero 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 zero, twenty twenty three G O bond capital projects to Fund eighty one seventy two dash zero 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 zero, Liberty Drive to Cars Trail, in the amount of four hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Second.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Go ahead, Ms. Ridge.
And this goes in line with moving the cash over uh to pay for our match on the construction of this project.
Thank you. Questions from council? Any comments or questions?
I'm I'm just excited to see this project move forward. I mean, this was something, you know, a couple of years ago, we were just kind of noodling about as a possibility and it's really exciting when you actually see it uh come to fruition.
And we have our um uh pre-construction meeting for this on Friday. The contractor is Crider and Crider, um, and I expect them to start immediately after April first also.
Busy spring. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll go to comments from the public. If you have them, come forward to Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Munsen?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, takes us to item D. E, pardon me.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request to deappropriate an appropriation and fun- fund forty nine twenty dash zero 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 zero, West Side Economic TIF, in the amount of one hundred sixty four thousand dollars for a hundred forty four and eighty s- and eighty cents in the services category.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Ms. Ridge?
So the cost of the project had come in higher than what we anticipated, which made the match go above the four hundred and thirty thousand that the commissioners had allocated. So we are using the funds from the West Side TIF um from our construction and engineering line. We presented this to the R D C Board last week. Um, so the one sixty four, four forty four eighty makes up the difference between uh what the commissioners had allocated and our match for the construction of the project.
Very much. Questions or comments from council? Seeing none, we will go to comments from the public. If you have comments, come forward to Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munsen?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Takes us to item F. And before we read that uh motion and handle that, the council will take after item F a ten minute recess and then come back together to resume business. All right.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request of a fund to fund transfer of cash from Fund forty nine twenty dash zero 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 zero, West Side Economic TIF to Fund eighty one seventy two dash zero 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 zero, Liberty Drive to Cars Trail, in the amount of one hundred sixty four thousand four hundred forty four dollars and eighty cents.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Ridge?
And this is to transfer the cash for the remainder of the match on the construction of the project.
Thank you so much. Questions or comments from council? Seeing none, so we will go to comments from the public on this. If you have comments, come forward to Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munsen?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, council, we're gonna recess for ten minutes. My clock.
On on the agenda, we said we'd do it after the health.
But we could do it.
Six thirty.
We have a person. Oh, okay.
I've got, I've I've got a sixth, uh, roughly past six thirty. So we're gonna do ten minutes. We'll come back in at six forty six. Counselors, please try to observe that as close as you can so we can keep on moving. Thank you so much. We're gonna call this meeting back from recess. Appreciate everyone's patience as we took a little break. Red item number twelve, it's a request from the Health Department.
Yes. Sorry.
You're doing well.
It's, yeah.
How about that? It's okay.
Insane. Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request of a category transfer and fund eleven sixty one dash zero 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 zero, local public health services in the amount of ten thousand six hundred six dollars and fifty cents from the services category to the personnel category.
Second.
Um, good evening. So this is just a request to um move some funds into our part-time line to help provide additional coverage and backup with our seasonal market inspections. to help provide additional coverage and backup with our seasonal market inspections. So the money from this contractual line wasn't actually dedicated at the time to a contract. It was reserved for potential contracts that we would develop with the Health First Funds. So it's not already been accounted for, and the state did approve this request. And I have that documented here as well.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Kelly. We'll go to questions from council. Counselors, do you have any questions for this? Comments? Seeing none, we'll go to comments from the public. If you have them, come forward to Nat U Hill or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Hawke? Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, that takes us to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request of a salary ordinance amendment and fund 1159-0000 Health Fund to Account Line 17301. Board members changing the paid 400 per year, per person, to paid $1,200 per year, per person.
Second.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes. So this change was submitted during the budget council sessions. And the reason for this increase is that we have increased the frequency and the demand of our Board of Health. So previously, they were paid $100 on a quarterly basis for four meetings per year. We do have set established meetings on a monthly basis. So wanted to just try to compensate them for their additional time. I honestly just did not catch this during last fall, that it wasn't updated. And I happened to see it the other day, which is why I'm here now.
Comments or questions from counselors?
Counselor Hawke?
Yes, was this approved during the budget session? Because I don't recall it being approved. I'm not saying I object to it, but I don't recall it being approved. And how many other boards might we be looking at that would be raised by this much?
Do a flashback with Michelle.
I went and reviewed the Health Department's budget, and yes, that amount was increased, and it was noted. It just didn't make it to the salary ordinance.
Thank you.
Duly noted. Other comments or questions from council? All right, seeing none, we'll go to comments or questions, or pardon me, comments from the public. If you have them, come forward to the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none, we will go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Right, thank you.
Ms. Kelly. All right, that takes us to item 13 on the agenda, and this is from Ms. Turner King in the legal department.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and approval of ordinance 2024-14 Amending the Food and Beverage Tax in Monroe County.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Ms. Turner King, what can you tell us?
Previously, I provided a draft of the, an ordinance amending the food and beverage tax. And what that draft did was to codify recent changes in the state statutes, mainly involving how and what information is reported to SBOA regarding our food and beverage tax. One of the things also that was changed was the role of the Advisory Commission. And since that draft was sent out, I had the opportunity to sit down with Counselor Munson and talk through a little bit more about how this would impact Fab, the FabTAC Committee. And so I would like to provide counsel an amended ordinance for consideration and then have this discussion at the next meeting, if that's okay.
Like a plan. So you're going to share that with us here via Teams?
You want me to share it now?
Oh, you wanted to go off?
I was going to send it, but if I could do either, I'm deferring to you.
I'm used to quick action. So you're going to send that to us and then we'll take this back up next time?
That would be my proposal, because I think the changes, especially to the Advisory Commission part, are a little bit more substantial than I can...
That makes sense.
...discuss right now.
I got you. I got you.
Counsel, I move we continue this item to the next, the next meeting, which is on...
March 12.
March 12.
Second.
Motion and a second on that. We discuss that or not discuss that? We've got any debate on the tabling. Counselor Hawke, I see your hand for debating on the tabling.
I just had my hand up before the motion was made to continue to another meeting. My question was simply going to be that I hope that this wasn't going to slow down in any way what, what we are hoping to move forward with, with the Capital Improvement Board. Because the way the legislation reads is that they still have to come and ask for the advice from the food and beverage tax. They don't have to do what the food and beverage tax people say, but they have to ask for the advice. That's the way the legislation is read, I believe you'll see. And so I, I hope this is not going to slow this down in any way. Whatever.
King, what's your read on all that?
I don't anticipate it slowing it down. I think the draft that Counselor Munson and I were working on incorporates a way that FabTAC would be providing their recommendations on what should be included in the county's plan to the commissioners in a timely manner. So I think I don't envision any slowdown.
Counselor Munson?
So I agree. Ms. Turner King was very careful to lay out a schedule that could be met and satisfy the state legislation that changed for food and beverage tax information. And she and I just talked about preserving the transparency of the revenue collections and the expenditures to the public so that it's not a sterile list of, of numbers of various types. But it does show them what's being done with, with the money that they, they contributed to, to the fund.
It sounds like the tabling will not injure our compliance with the law. All right, let's do a vote on this tabling. How about a roll call vote?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, so the motion has been tabled until that next meeting. Ms. Turner King, did you have something else?
Yes, and before moving on to item B, kind of tangentially related, I will note that the, one of the main statutory changes is the county now has to file a March 1 report detailing expenditures and revenues with the State Board of Accounts. The Auditor's Office is going to file that report on Friday, and we received the information from the city to do so, to include their portions in that report today.
Thank you, Auditor Gregory. We appreciate that. Keep us compliant. All right, let's go on now to item B.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and possible approval of amendments to the 2024 salary ordinance.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Turner King, again.
This item addresses some concerns that Employee Services has had relating to the payment of election workers. There's been a discrepancy in the vouchers that were submitted for payment of those employees and with what's in the salary ordinance. So Employee Services asked that we, they were just seeking some clarity on what the salary ordinance, what the pay is supposed to be. One of the issues that is leading to the discrepancy is the wording in the salary ordinance. Particularly for absentee board members, or I think in the salary ordinance, they're called absentee board leads or clerks, it states a per diem of $140 a day, and it says per election day. Now, there are multiple election workers that work on election day. And for those workers, we, we interpret election day to be either, you know, first in May and November. But absentee workers are working currently. And so the description is, is it $140 a day every day they work, or is it on election day? So I have three proposals that I would propose for council consideration on how to fix the salary ordinance discrepancies.
Counselor McKim? Sorry, before you move on, I just want to confirm. The clerk's office has actually turned in payroll vouchers treating the employees as hourly, correct?
Correct. And that's the other discrepancy. The pay vouchers submitted by the clerk's office have, reflect an hourly rate, where our salary ordinance reflects a per diem rate. Statutorily, the council sets the salary for two types of election workers, and that's absentee board members and travel board members. Both of those statutes provide for a per diem rate. However, I've checked with the Election Division to see if we set an hourly rate, whether it would suffice as a per diem. The Election Division was silent on the issue, but I did check with SBOA. And SBOA said what they would look for in an audit process is if the employees are being paid in accordance with the salary ordinance. So if our salary ordinance has a per diem and they're paying a per diem, it's fine. If our salary ordinance has an hourly rate and we're paying an hourly rate, okay. The, where we're going to run into an issue is where we're paying an hourly rate, but our salary ordinance has a per diem.
Thank you.
So looking at the screen, highlighted is in blue. Wait, did you just move that? You have absentee boards, early voting, travel boards, and then just a line down is the absentee leads. I think there are potentially three ways the council could consider fixing this issue. The first way is for absentee board leads. You could remove the paid-per-election-day language and just leave it $140 a day. Now, and then the clerk's office would be instructed that it's $140 a day, whether those employees are working two hours or eight hours, we can't prorate it. It's $140 a day. The second option would be to change the absentee board leads to an hourly rate, which correlates with the paperwork that the clerk's office has submitted for those individuals. Or the third option would be to eliminate the lines that says absentee boards, early voting, and absentee boards leads, and just make a line that says absentee board members. Statutorily, there's not a subcategory of absentee board members, or absentee board members. But in practice, the clerk's office has subcategories such as leads, supervisor, recruiter, things like that. If, so in option three, the proposal would be just create one line that says absentee board members and establish either a per diem or an hourly rate for those individuals, which then eliminates the need to continually update the salary ordinance every time a subcategory at the absentee board members is added. So those are the three proposals that I think would be the cleanest way to clear up any confusion for the Employee Services and in our salary ordinance. I will note that the election board meets on March 7. So if council wanted the election board to weigh in and provide any response to those three options, I'm happy to present it to them. I just wanted to bring the issue to you first to see how you would like to proceed.
I'm raising my hand for myself, but my, my... You should run this meeting, Ms. Turner King. You're doing a great job. My, my understanding is the middle proposal that you have identified reflects the, what the clerk's office has submitted and what Employee Services would ultimately like to do. It's just we, we're playing catch-up on our end.
Correct. So if you change, you just change absentee boards leads to an hourly rate, then that would correlate to what Employee Services has received from the clerk's office. I think that we could go a step further and just combine all absentee workers, because I think there are going to be multiple subcategories created of absentee workers, and we can keep amending it and adding multiple subcategories after subcategories.
And they determine, you're doing this and, and they run that, we do the payroll, this end, and that's it. Okay. Comments? Counselor McKim?
So first of all, I guess what would be the advantage to us, to the county, of a per diem rather than, or, you know, a daily per diem? I know per diem means daily, but a per diem rather than an hourly rate. It seems like an hourly rate accurately reflects the amount of work performed. It's okay with the State Board of Accounts, as long as that's exactly what our salary ordinance says. Why wouldn't we want to go with an hourly rate?
I, I think the hourly rate makes more sense, because it's been a payment for hours actually worked. I think per diems make more sense for, like, the apps, or the election workers on the day of, because then they're just working from when polls open to when polls close. But that's not the category of election workers that we're currently discussing. These are the individuals that work at minimum, I think, 28 days before the election, but they, I mean, they're currently working, so we're, you know, 70-plus days from the election.
And so for the, the pay vouchers that were turned in, treating them as hourly employees, how many hours were being claimed?
So in the most recent pay vouchers, it was two hours, and then it reflected a rate of $17 an hour.
So I definitely support your third, your, your recommended option, but I am very interested in hearing the, giving the election board a chance to consider and make their recommendations and raise any concerns as well.
Other counselors' comments or, I see Counselor Hawke's hand.
I think Counselor McKim covered what I was going to ask.
Thank you.
Because I think we have some of those early workers who maybe just work half a day instead of working a full day or whatever. So it seems to me that makes sense.
Counselor Wiltz?
Do the, do the folks who work on election day work the full shift, like 12 hours? I don't, I mean, I...
I don't know that I have the information to answer that. I believe they do, but I'm not 100% sure.
Not always.
Not always, is the...
Not, oh, they're, I'm not sure what happened this, this last election, but I know in the past there were a lot of people who said, look, I could work the morning shift, but not the afternoon shift. And if they got really short of people, they would do like, somebody would do half a day. But I agree, we should wait and see what the board has to say.
So the plan was developed several elections ago to have half-day shifts. And this made more people happy, because working a full 16 hours was really, was really hard on people. And so it is, it needs to be an hourly rate for everything.
Right, but we're not discussing that right now, anyway. I just was thinking, okay, if they're working a half-day and they're getting paid twice as much than the absentee folks, which is, might be fine. I just was trying to get, you know, better understand it. So, and I totally agree, we should hear from the election board and go from there.
And the only reason I'm not talking about the inspector, judges, precinct sheriff, clerks, absentee board couriers, and clerks is because statute... And the only reason I'm not talking about the inspector judges, precinct sheriff, clerks, absentee board couriers, and clerks is because statutorily, those election workers are set by the commissioners. So in looking at the statutes, I think the easiest way, or to make sense of what I think the legislator was trying to do, is that the commissioners are setting the rates for the individuals who are working the day of and only the day of, and then council is looking at the rates for the individuals who are working more than the day of. Eventually, I think we're going to have to add a training line in there, because the commissioners also set the training rate for all election workers. And current, we don't have a training line in our salary ordinance, so just to make sure everything matches, I'd like to eventually add a training line. And so I'm going to work on getting a resolution to the commissioners to also have their recommendations on what they want for the election workers that they're responsible for, so that we can update the salary ordinance preferably all at once.
Any other comments or questions? I have one of my own before, I think we will need a motion to table. And maybe I, we'll entertain it as chair and see what we get.
I move to table action on the change in salary ordinance until, oh, I forgot the date.
March 12.
Until our meeting on March 12.
Second.
Got a tabling motion and a second, any discussion on that? None? Okay. We will go to a roll call vote on tabling this.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. One thing I just want to, as we move to the next item, just want to reiterate, we appreciate very much the diligence of our staff and counsel attorney and employee services, trying to always make sure we do right by that, as well as all of our election workers. In a conversation earlier today with just, with Wiss, Counselor Wiltz and Counselor Crossley, and I even heard Wiss say that these days, election workers are under unusual strain, more so than they either A deserve or B most humans will take. And so we appreciate staff and attorney trying to get this right, so we support that system the most accurate legal way possible. Well, let's move to item 14.
Counsel, I move to approve the summary minutes for the January 9th and January 23rd, 2024 council meetings, and the February 13th, 2024 executive session of the Monroe County Council and Board of Commissioners as presented.
Second.
Any changes, edits, or questions to the minutes? Counselor Hawke? It's muted still, Counselor.
Thank you. You see that on your notes that a council member asked for a change to be made, and that was me, because it was entered, and I don't have it in front of me, but it was something like, that I had alluded to, that election, that elected officials were important. Well, now, you know, I don't think I said that I thought we were important, although I, I really believe all of you do a really great job, but I'm sure I didn't say that I thought we were important. So I'm glad I caught that, because I don't always read those minutes. I thought maybe that was a test case, so. Anyway, I think I might have been referring to that it was important to stay in touch with your election officials, especially the ones at the state, right? What's going on at the state right now. But at any rate, so that will teach us all to read these minutes, because we don't know what might be said, so thank you.
Yeah, and I think what happened was, like during, like now, you know, I take little notes and everything, and so the gal that would do the summary minutes, I probably just wrote, trying to keep up with what Counselor Hawke was saying, and I probably said something to that effect, and that's what she typed, so.
All right. Are there, so we've got those changes. With that in mind, can we do a, a roll call on this? Or wait, is there a member of the public that wishes to comment on this? Please come forward in the At You Hill or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none, we will go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
We'll now move to that portion of the evening, the last one, it's counsel comments. Counselors, any comments you wish to make? Counselor McCam?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to talk for a minute about CCBHC, or Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinics. The CCBHC model, and I'll, I'll come to why it's important locally, but the, the CCBHC model can be thought of as kind of a new operating system for the provision of mental health and substance abuse services. In the current model, community mental health centers get reimbursed a fixed amount for each specific service provided. And of course, that amount is never enough, and it also forces facilities to really focus on billable procedures. The CCBHC model instead provides reimbursement based on the overall actual costs of providing services to the, the individuals receiving services. And of course, those costs have to be carefully documented and justified. CCBHC facilities are required to provide nine core services, and they're required to provide all of them. Crisis services, which include 24 by 7 mobile crisis, screening, diagnosis, and risk assessment, psychiatric rehabilitation services, outpatient primary care screening and monitoring, targeted case management, outpatient mental health and substance use services, person and facility-centered treatment planning, community-based mental health care for veterans, and peer family support and counselor services. These can all, that can be, centers can provide these services either themselves or through a certified partner. But it allows behavioral health services to be funded based on the overall costs of caring for the person, rather than performing a certain number of billable procedures. Currently, CCBHC is a model implemented through demonstration grants to only a limited number of states. And we are very much hoping that Indiana will be in the next round of CCBHC demo states. Centerstone has been selected as one of eight mental health centers to be part of Indiana's application to the federal government to be part of the next round of CCBHC demo states. That application will be made March 20, and we hope to hear in June. And my understanding is that up to 10 additional states may be considered for CCBHC demo in this round. The state does have some options for Plan B if we're not selected, but this upcoming round presents an incredible opportunity to fund community behavioral health and substance use services the way that they should be funded.
Thank you very much, Counselor McCam. We appreciate your experience and knowledge on that and sharing with us. Other counsel comments? One item I will just note from the chair is that, as I've alluded to a few times this evening, there's allegedly some very difficult weather coming through. I appreciate very much that emergency management has been sending out updates to officials and all of our interested folks, and they will continue to do that. I just want to iterate on behalf of this council, we know that if that happens, that folks ranging from our law enforcement to our highway individuals, to our emergency management team will be looking, responding, doing what they all do best. And we want to say that we are grateful in advance for that, but I hope you all instead have a nice peaceful night. For all the folks listening to me out there, be safe, watch out for each other during those moments, and we will hope that this is not a thing, but if it is, let's be safe through it and get to the other side as usual. All right, with that, nothing else to note, this meeting is adjourned.